We're going to call this work session Monday, December 21st to order immigration again by Gary Stewart and the pledge by Mike Asher.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the very many blessings you've given us. But ask now to watch over these proceedings and let me plead on your side. Please watch over the citizens and employees that see this gospel during this holiday season. Please watch over the military, especially the ones away from their families during this time. Watch over us all, guard God and direct us, so in the end we all come to thee. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing tonight, the work session is our Detective County Cruisers. Where do we start? Let me see, Mike over there.
I come here with two requests. First is that we be allowed to move our monthly cruise in from the first Saturday of the month to the second Saturday of the month. The reason for that request is now that first Monday is rapid backup. Those two events really don't go well together. We started having more first Monday participants about July and every month after that, our attendance chart through then went down because of the parking that's not there for the cars. And we had several people that came, couldn't find a parking place and left. And then they didn't come back the next month. So we're requesting that we be allowed to move our cruise ins for the second Saturday of the month rather than first. The second request is if the first is approved, we would like to get approval for our tourism grant application, which supports that cruise in and use all the money that you give us to give cash awards to the participants. Last year, I think we had about $4,500 approved. We spent $1,200. We were very frugal and careful. We didn't have two cruise ends and then we also cut back and didn't give a final big payout. We usually get away at the end of the year because we didn't feel like it's light and we didn't have enough participants there every year to justify getting away $500 at the end. So we only did way $1,200 last year. And our request for this year is for $2,600. That will be 300 for each event and then 500 at the end of the year. That end of the year give out, we keep it count of everyone who attends every cruise in. So if they attend seven cruise in, they get put in seven times to win the final giveaway. In the past, that's encouraged regular participation.
Sure average, every meeting.
Well, this year, probably a high of about 70 participants, low of about 50. Like I said, our first one was in June and we had more participants then. And then it kept declining after July. In the past, we've had as high as 120. And we've had some difficulties. We were up to as high as 120 and then we had to move off the square because of the construction and we were out on Highway 72. We got back up to over 100 and then we moved back on the square and had to build it back up. And then we were going pretty good this year.
I'm sure it'll be a tip, catch on just like it has anybody else. Some people just don't want to get out. Anybody have any questions? We'll put those on tonight's meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Number two, discuss the high country Toyota sales taxes. Mr. Kim.
I received about 2/3 this afternoon a packet of information from Mr. Hill in regard to this proposed sales tax incentive. Sent a copy of that to the mayor, sent a copy of that to Whitney. At this stage, I have not reviewed these documents yet. And I have no doubt that they are the same documents that Mr. Hill said he had presented the other day, but I have not reviewed them yet.
Anyone have any questions on that? Mr. Kim and I was having a chance to review it. I'd like to go ahead and reduce the January 4th work session. I've already made the work session. And we can go over again, give everybody a chance to go over. Number three, discuss the request of vacate portion of Moody Ridge Road.
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to come for you. I'm Gerald Pollak and I'm legal counsel for Maples. And this is Vito Russo, who's the CFO of Maples. What this, I guess, request of the proposal involved is closing and forcing the Moody Ridge Road to better facilitate traffic and entryway into from Maples. I think, if I understand, I think, Whitney, maybe everybody has a copy of the proposed drawing there. I don't know if this is going to add a lot. Vito, why don't you, y'all can see this. The only thing that we've really added here was to show you, is that here's the existing Moody Ridge Road. This part right here would be closed off and some, like I think it's on your diagram, about 550 feet, something like that. And then instead of it terminating into 279 and West Willow, it would make a close to a 90-degree turn here and come out squared off at 279. The reason we're here is because obviously Moody Ridge is a public thoroughfare and the state would actually require the city to make the applications for the work, I guess, both in terms of closing this off where the existing, what I call triangle terminates right here and adding a new access point there. There are really, I guess you say there are three reasons for it. One, this is wholesale supply and in the past, for many years, there's been a leasehold interest that Maples had as to some of the wholesale property which was used for parking at Maples. That lease is now terminated and so Maples not only has no ownership interest, they have no leasehold interest in the property. And yet, this area right here that's depicted, I'm not even sure it says shipping on your diagram, but it says to Maple's shipping and that's where the trucks come in right here. So it's pretty, it's very significant and it's enhanced, the need for that's enhanced by the fact that Maples is going to be adding additional employees. What, Vito, maybe 100?
First shift, about 100, 110.
Yeah, so there are going to be 110 more coming, cars coming, you know, to and from the plant in hopefully not too distant future. And then...
And overall, our shipping, about 30%.
Yeah. And, you know, the fact of the matter is, even if that weren't so, so that's two reasons, the loss of the lease and then the increase in the traffic. But if that weren't true, if you've ever been down this way and you ever had a reason to turn right there, it's got to be in the top three. Our former police chief might can address that. Dangerous intersections because not only do cars, maybe perhaps say more than need to, but if you've ever been on Moody Ridge and you come up and you went all the way to the stop sign here, you're actually out on the roadway if you go all the way to the stop sign. And people trying to turn in here, just employees, has always been a real danger. And I know that Josh can attest to this. I think that the state's position is if we were asking to put a road in here like that, they'd say, "We would never, we would never approve a roadway that came in at an angle like that." So not only does it help Maples' cause and make it safer for them, we think it probably does for the general public. The other thing I wanted to comment on was this drawing depicts that where the new road would turn here, Maples owns that lot right there on the corner, where the turn is. And then the only other property in the new road would be totally on Maples property that they own currently. There's no condemnation issue or maybe even consent. The adjoining property owner here is Don Croft, which I can assure you, there's not a problem there. Don would be all for it if that were even a concern or an issue without a non-Maples owner being Croft that even adjoins this property. So, I mean, again, it's like a picture's worth of thousand words. I think it sort of speaks for itself and it would not, I don't think it would impede or hurt any other property owners that, you know, use that thoroughfare. And in fact, I think it would help them for the reasons stated before, which is simply that you would be able to enter onto 279 and Willow more safely, coming in at an angle and saying, you know, gee, who's going first? Who's going to go in it first? So...
So instead of saying vacate, this really should say move the road. Because we're not, actually, I know we're being vacating that part, but you're actually wanting the road moved because we're going to have a new park.
Right. What, and that's a good point, Mr. President, is that the, this is, I believe, maybe 250 feet, it's something like that. Anyway, Maples would deed that to the city. It would be the new street and in turn, the city would just abandon its interest, I guess, or remove it from your vacate, yeah, your vacate, excuse me. Thank you. Why you're... I had that word there, vacate. And that would just become part of Maples' park property and parking, which is, all this is parking anyway.
Now, has there been any kind of utilities reviewed, electric or water and gas, for where you want to put this new road?
As best we can tell, there's really no issues there. Now, previously, we met with Philip Cheney in terms of trying to expand this area to make a safer turn in. It still doesn't eliminate the coming together of the intersection there. But if they had done that and expanded it, I can't remember how many things it was, but it did involve a power pole that they could not move. But this proposal, it's not, it's not really an issue with respect to that. Did you want to add something I may have?
Yes, we'd like to enlarge the entrance for the shipping here. And the only way we can do that is to come this direction. We can't go towards wholesale.
I think it's a good idea myself. That's a dangerous place to try to pull out from. I went up there the other day and just looked at it myself. And you come in from Maples and you're going to head west, you've got to look around behind you almost to see if you can get out. And as many cars goes in now there every day, I believe that would hit with accidents. So I'm sure it has happened, I think.
Yeah, and I would bet, Mike, it is a good point. It reminds me to say something I was going to, which is when you have an 18-wheeler or a large truck, Maples has another loading dock right here. And so this truck has to make a, in effect, like a U-turn and come back at an angle in here to drive back down there.
Gerald, have y'all discussed this with White Sur and Gas Board? To see where the gas lines are, water lines are, things like that that could be affected?
Have not, not yet.
Have you spoken to the State of Alabama?
Yes.
On whether or not they would require a turning lane on West Willow Street?
That has been discussed preliminarily. We do not believe that it will be required. I do know that the right-of-way specialist in our local area has sent a copy of the plan to the Guntersville Aldi office. We've not got any feedback from them yet. But again, I guess, Steve, it's just the preliminary fact that we don't, you know, we can't control this proposal without the city's assistance.
And who would play for the new road?
Well, we certainly expect that to be some form of cost sharing. And we, at the initial meeting we had, there was some discussion about possibly the city bearing the engineering cost and...
Surveying.
Surveying. Maples actually came for the...
Have Maples looking rent from the state regarding these?
No, not yet.
And if the state required, if the state required an acceleration or deceleration lane there, would you expect that to be handled the same way?
Yes. All I have.
Is my understanding we got to do the engineering and the surveying for anything to really get going to, is this correct?
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions? I'd like to move this to January 4th, the work session, to give everybody a chance to go out there and look at this and give the public a chance to speak on it also. And then we'll go from there.
Yeah.
If you need any later information, just contact me with Vito at the plants.
Okay.
All right, sounds great. Thank you. Number four, it's going to be discuss the request for additional full-time yellow positions. Mr. Leder.
Good evening. The last couple of months, I've run into some issues in our city jail. We currently have six full-time jailers and two part-time jailers. That second part-time position was approved by the council, the previous council in January. However, that was never filled. We posted numerous times, just didn't seem to get any interest and was never able to fill it. But I believe the cause of that is due to the lack, it's part-time position. And that position usually is a second or third shift position. So it's not too desirable to be working in any city jail on the second and third shift part-time. But in the last couple of months, we've had a personnel shortage in the jail due to some illnesses and surgeries. We had one jailer who's currently on a 30-hour restricted work week. And she's probably going to go on and extend a period of time of leave come the new year. And we currently have another jailer that's out with a surgery as well. And then with all this being going on, trying to fight this COVID thing, we're having some scheduling issues and paying a lot of overtime and stuff like that. We've adjusted some schedules and we're working them for 12s, like our police officers do. However, that's, I mean, that's asking a lot of me. And here lately, I've put two officers, or two newest officers, when they come on their night shift, they spend six hours in jail trying to learn to operate the system in case we do have a sure enough emergency or if I lose some more jailers, where they'll have to actually physically run to jail and trying to get those guys trained up. So what I'm asking for is an addition of one full-time jailer to keep the part-time jailer slot that's currently filled right now and do away with that second part-time position that was approved in January. The annual cost I have for these figured should be in your packet. And that's starting pay at 11 and 9. And that's, I'm taking into account, I'm going to try to, if it's approved, I'm going to try to hire an experienced jailer instead of a new trainee that we have to train. And that cost is roughly $48,720 a year. That's on a 12-month thing. What I'm asking for right now is an amendment, budget amendment for the nine-month cost, which would be $36,540. And that's estimating hiring an experienced jailer. And I may not get that. I may have to hire a starting jailer with no experience. And that cost is $25,751 a year. And that's accounting benefits and payroll taxes and all that, retirement. The jail is probably the highest liability area in the police department and probably for the city, one of the most highest liability areas. And we really need this additional jailer, full-time, to cover these shortages and then to be able to have two jailers on shift some of that time, too. This is pretty difficult to run that jail by yourself. And right now, our numbers are down, but in the summer, maybe when this COVID thing passes, our numbers will get back up in the jail. Right now, we're taking measures to keep those inmate numbers down as best we can. But that's something that we need to think about in the future, too. Any questions?
Can you make a question? Keep going. What's the average inmate count?
Right now, we're running around 15 inmates a day.
Right now?
Right now, today. Over the weekend, we got up to 21. I'm trying to keep it 20 and less as best I can. As you know, normally, we generally run 28 to 30. If you take away this COVID stuff.
Yeah.
We run about 30 prisoners, we average top 30 a day.
So when you drop the part-time, the second part-time position, that, those monies can be put towards the full-time position.
To fund, you're correct, to fund that nine months of the full-time, but then it would become a permanent position, the full-time, the next fiscal year.
Mr. Leder, can you tell me about what the cost would be to go from having a part-time to go full-time?
I think we probably included in the budget about $12,000 for the part-time and the benefits, which the benefits is only your flat payroll taxes, so...
Anyone else have any questions, David? We'll go ahead and put that on tonight's meeting. All right. Next, discuss the request for additional E-911 dispatcher.
Yes. Currently, we have 14 dispatchers. Let me back up just to give you some lay of the land. The emergency 911 is housed in our facility. They dispatch all emergency dispatch for the whole county. Volunteer fire, ambulance, our police officers, and then any other calls that come into them, they forward them to, like I say, the Jackson County Sheriff's Department or something like that. So we have 14 full-time dispatchers. One of those dispatchers is a supervisor who's in charge of scheduling and handling personnel matters. So really, that just leaves us with 13 actual dispatchers. The city currently pays for seven of those dispatchers and the 911 board pays for seven. The 911 board has met and has agreed and approved in their minutes from their previous meeting on the 15th that they would request that we hire an additional dispatcher and that they would pay for that eighth dispatcher at the cost of the newest, to fund the newest dispatcher. So they would be paying for eight and the city would still continue to pay for the seven that they're paying for. And my request is that we, that you all approve that so we can go ahead and start that process and hire a dispatcher. A dispatcher cost, a new hire, no experience, total is roughly around $37,899 a year. Again, those funds would be paid by the 911 board.
So you're saying we can hire an employee and they have to pay them?
Correct. They would pay the salary and all the benefits.
Anyone have any questions? Keep going. We'll put that on tonight's meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Next, is to discuss the contract for the demolition grant.
I think we have your packet tonight, the contract with the CTS. This project will be in September. We have four contractors that have been on it and CTS has a little bit on it. This is the result of the ADECA grant that we received to demo 25 structures in the city.
You're just needing an agreement tonight, that we can get this started.
Yeah, to prove the agreement, to go ahead and get the contract started on its sites.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Leder, on this? I know we've been going over this for a while.
I previewed the documents. The documents are in order. There could be an amendment that would come to you later on the additional houses that were added, which would be covered primarily by the grant. There's still not yet a level of the grant.
Grant. If no one else has any questions, we'll put that on tonight's meeting. Next, is to discuss the request for a state audit. Ms. Nita, Ms. Dole.
I have asked that our board, sorry. I've asked that our board come up with a, the state to come in to audit us. I feel like with a new mayor, to new council, I feel like that we need to make sure that things are running the way they should be. And I feel like things are, but I feel like, let's just know what is, I'm going to take this off just for now. I just want to know, as a new member, where our money's at and everything is up to par. And I feel like that would be great for a new mayor, new council members that's coming in and even the old ones. I just feel like that, guys.
I see.
And plus, the city of Scottsboro needs to know. Okay? We have citizens here that needs to know.
I guess somebody can cross to kind of speak on y'all's audit for me. Dean, just to kind of go over basically what your audit does. We do your...
Okay. Audit, the audit we perform every year is, is a audit performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. That, that audit is an annual audit that's required by the state law. All municipalities in Alabama have that annual audit. We do also occasionally perform a compliance audit over your federal programs. And that, that audit's done in accordance with new form guidance. And that audit is required in any year that you spend more than seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in federal funds. So that would be different types of federal grants, such as some of the first third-deca airport grants. But there are some years that you spend more than seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in federal funds and other years that you don't. So the years that you don't spend that, over that threshold, you're not required to have that federal funds audit.
As far as a state audit, how much different would it be than what you already do?
I really got no idea. Just understand there are different kinds of audits, different types of audits. And, you know, audits can have different scopes and objectives. So I really don't know what, what kind of state audits you guys are contemplating or even which, you know, I don't know if it'd be the Examiners of Public Accounts that would be performing that audit. So can't really answer that question. A good answer, because it could be a different type of audit. But even if it were the same scope and objective, two audits are gonna be performed a little bit differently because one audit firm is gonna look at certain things and the other audit will look at different things. There's auditor judgment involved in both those audits as to what we look at. However, you know, as part of our audit, you know, I, I need to know if you guys have concerns because that kind of helps me focus my audit where there is risk. So if there are areas that you guys have concerns about, I need to know that so I can look at it as part of my audit.
That'd be good to do that way in the future. If any questions, I'm sure any of us could call your office.
Sure.
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions for you?
Question for?
Mr. Kenner.
Yes, sir.
The story, I guess. Has the city ever been, have a state audit done?
The, the city has, well, let's start off. The mayor has the authority under the statute to hire the auditor. The council has the obligation to pay for it. That's the law. The council has the right, if they choose, to hire or obtain its own audit also. I think there have been two years out of the last thirty, maybe, where that's been done. And one of them, I believe they hired a private auditing firm down in Birmingham. And I believe in the other, the State Department of Public Examiners was involved.
And do you know how long ago that was?
It's been a long one.
Anyone else have any questions on that?
Ms. Oliver.
Yes.
Is there, are you aware of any irregularities that might spark this?
Uh, no, as a new city council. As, I feel like, as, as a person coming on, I wanna make sure things are running right. I don't see a problem with that, Mr. Cross Associates. I don't, I'm not saying anything y'all have did wrong. I want you to know that. I just feel as a new city, Catherine, I feel like that I wanna know that things are running right before we get started in the, in my four years. Okay?
Mr. McCann, do you have any kind of estimate on the state audit cost?
I do not. I can't check on that this week. Well, through the holidays, did I can find somebody to check on it and see what the cost would be?
Now, are you talking a private audit firm or are you talking Examiners of Public Accounts? Examiners of Public Accounts.
Yes. Excuse me, Mayor, I'm sorry. I do know that our city schools, they did the same thing. They did an audit. And I may, maybe we should talk to some of them.
You know, I don't disagree with it, but I think we would need to table it until we find out what the cost is so we can do a budget amendment.
That's fine with me. It's fine with me. But I feel like we do need it.
Anybody else have any questions on that?
If not, we're gonna move that to the January fourth work session again. We'll talk about it and give them, Mayor McCann, a chance to check the prices and see what the cost is.
Thank you, Mr. Council.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
All right. Next is to discuss the Alabama College Bass Nation Tournament Agreement. Mayor, we need you to come up back up.
Uh, this tournament is scheduled for May twenty-second and twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, and the sponsorship fee is six thousand, five hundred dollars.
Anyone have any questions on that?
Mr. President, this does go along with the Bass Masters Elite Series. The Bass Master Elite ends on Saturday and this one is, it gets associated with that as well.
And that is sixty-five hundred?
Sixty-five hundred.
We're gonna move that to January fourth work session also. Give us a chance to, to go. Is there any rooms or any extra that goes along with this one also? Do you have that? For like I said, we're gonna move it to January fourth.
Are there any other entities that are chicken entities? Or is that? No?
Give us a chance to see how much is in our tourism grant fund also before we agree on this one. All right, it's moved to January fourth. Next is to discuss the sick leave policy change. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. I'm asking for an addition to the city's sick leave policy. Currently, the city's sick leave policy includes paying fifty percent of employees' approved sick leave for old retirement, generally retirement that's gonna be planned for. Right now, if an active, full-time employee dies while they're working, the employee's family or beneficiary does not receive any of the employee's approved sick leave benefits. The proposed addition to the sick leave payout is to include active, full-time employees that pass away. My recommendation is council approval of a hundred percent payout of approved sick leave to the employee's designated beneficiary. And this addition be retroactive to October one, twenty-twenty, to coincide with the city's fiscal year.
Anyone have any questions on that? If not, we'll move that to tonight's meeting.
With that completed, our work session, we'll do reports at the end of our council meeting. So give us about five minutes to move everything over and then we'll resume.
Formalities, and Ms. Phillips, we do a roll call.
Mr. Rathoff?
Here.
Ms. Nada Tolliver?
Here.
Mr. Mike Ashburn?
Here.
Mr. Gary Stewart?
Here.
Mr. Richard Bayden?
Here.
Before we adopt the agenda, since we've got all this added, I'll, I'll read it out. First thing on the agenda is the public hearing for the alcohol license for Scottsboro pit stop liquor. Number two is the public hearing for alcohol license for the Parks Avenue Liquors. Number three will be the mayor's recommendations for directors. Number four will be the cruisers to move from the first Saturday of each month to the second Saturday of each month. Also, we'll do the tourism grant for twenty-six-hundred dollars. Number five is the budget amendment up to thirty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-forty dollars to change from six full-time and two part-time to seven full-time and one part-time jailer. Number six will be to add an additional E-911 dispatcher. Number seven will be to enter a contract through the demolition grant to award the bid, to approve the contract, and also to authorize the mayor, city clerk, and city attorney to sign all documents. Number eight will be to amend the employee handbook to change the sick leave policy. With that being said, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make the motion.
Do I have a second?
You say it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is to approve the previous minutes from December fourteenth, twenty-twenty. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
You say it.
Any discussion on those? If not, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. There's no old business that will move into the new business. First thing is the public hearing for alcohol license for Scottsboro pit stop liquor. Ms. Phillips?
The applicant is Amet Patel, alcohol licensed retail liquor for off-premise consumption. Doing business at Scottsboro Pit Stop Liquor located at forty-six, twenty-three South Broad Street, Suite A. There were three businesses and five residents surveyed with no objections. The nearest structure and school footage requirements were met. License application is in order. Health, fire, and building inspections comply, and zoning verification complies.
Thank you. This is the time and place for a public hearing on this. Is there anybody here for this? Anybody here against this? If not, do I have a motion to approve this alcohol license?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I say it.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Next is the public hearing for Parks Avenue Liquors. Ms. Phillips?
The applicant is John Lorden, alcohol licensed retail liquor for off-premise consumption. Doing business as Parks Avenue Liquors located at four-zero-one, Parks Avenue. There were five businesses and three residents surveyed with no objections. Near structure and school footage requirements were met. License application is in order. Health inspection complies. Fire and building inspections are pending final inspection and zoning verification complies.
This is the time and place for a public hearing on this. Is there anybody here for this? Anybody here against this? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to approve this pending inspection, please?
I pass. I haven't made that motion.
Do I have a second?
I say it.
Any discussion on that? If not, we'll vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes pending inspection. Number three is the mayor's recommendations. Mayor has asked that we would do this individually, in any order you would like, so.
All right. I recommend the reappointment of Rick Wheeler as finance director.
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I say it.
Any discussion? If not, Ms. Phillips, we do a roll call vote.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Ms. Tolliver?
Yes.
Mr. Ashburn?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Bayden?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor?
Hey, human resource director, I recommend Aaron Green reappointed as human resource director.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I say it.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote on that. Ms. Phillips, we do a roll call vote.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Ms. Tolliver?
Yes.
Mr. Ashburn?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Bayden?
Yes.
That is approved. Mayor?
Hey, recreation director, Yvonne informed me last week that she is retiring after thirty-one years of service to the city of Scottsboro. And I will ask to have a recommendation as an interim director at the January meeting.
Do I have a motion to, to move that to the January fourth meeting for an interim?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I say it.
Any discussion on that? Before we go, I just wanna, I know Yvonne's not here tonight, but thank her for her many years of service to the city of Scottsboro. With that being said, Ms. Phillips, we do a roll call vote.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Ms. Tolliver?
Yes.
Mr. Ashburn?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Bayden?
Yes.
Mayor?
Hey, solid waste director, I recommend the reappointment of Mr. Stacy Leblez, solid waste director.
With that being said, do I have a motion?
I have a motion. I accept that motion, I'm sorry.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Say it.
Any discussion on that? If not, Ms. Phillips, we do a roll call vote.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Ms. Tolliver?
Yes.
Mr. Ashburn?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Bayden?
Yes.
Mayor?
Street department superintendent, I recommend reappointment of Mr. Wayne Moore, his street department superintendent.
With that being said, do I have a motion to approve Wayne Moore, street superintendent?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I say it.
Any discussion on that? If not, Ms. Phillips?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Ms. Tolliver?
Yes.
Mr. Ashburn?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Bayden?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. With that being done, we'll move to number four. Talk about the cruisers, request to move from first Saturday of each month to the second Saturday of each month. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I say it.
Any discussion? Well, during discussion, I just wanna thank them. I know they were a lot, it helped them bring First Monday back by having them set up each Monday. And you can see the difference already in First Monday. I appreciate y'all. And I understand why it's gotten too big now and you wanna move. And I, I thank you for coming tonight for that. That being said, all in favor of to move from first, first Saturday of each month to the second, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Next is the tourism grant for the cruisers for twenty-six-hundred dollars. Do I have a motion to approve that, Green?
I make that motion.
Second.
I say it. Any discussion on that? Not, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the budget amendment up to thirty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-forty dollars to change from six full-time and two part-time jailers to seven full-time and one part-time jailer. Do I have a motion to approve that budget amendment?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is to add an additional E-911 dispatcher. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I say it.
Any discussion on that? If not, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is to award the bid and approve the contract for the demolition grant and also authorize the mayor, city clerk, and city attorney to sign all the documents that go with this. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I make this motion.
Do I have a second?
I say.
Any discussion on? Any discussion, I just wanna go over again what, what Ken said that there would probably be a limit to this, add the other four that we, we did, but by doing this, we can get them started. So after saying that, we'll vote, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If not? Motion carries. Next is the minimum employee handbook to change the sick leave policy. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion on that? If not, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. No delegation, if not? Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, to the council, thank you for changing that sick leave policy. I think that's very significant for the employees and for the beneficiaries if and when something does happen. So thank you. I'd also like to thank Avon Yoke, I know she's not here tonight for her 31 years of service. That's significant. Now, a lot of people make 30 years, we've got another police officer that has and hopefully we'll be able to recognize him at the next meeting. But we appreciate her 31 years of service. I would ask, I appreciate everybody being here, I would ask that everybody, particularly over the holidays, our numbers continue to rise. I know we've got the vaccine coming here and coming and we'll have more in the next month to six weeks. But I would ask everyone to please continue to mask, sanitize, and separate, particularly over the holidays. We'll make sure that everybody is able to enjoy the holidays again next year, so please do that. Other than that, I hope everyone has a very sacred Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. Stewart? I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. We got some things done tonight and I think we've done a pretty good lineup for, for the management of our departments. We have, we have very good departments, they do a very good job and really proud of them and appreciate their service. But I'd like to just otherwise wish everyone a happy New Year, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you. Mr. Ashburn?
Just Merry Christmas to everyone, be safe out there.
Ms. Tolliver?
I'd like to tell everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and continue to pray for the ones that are sick and shut in. I want y'all to continue to pray for my family because my husband is in the hospital too, so please continue praying for us, thank you.
Mr. Dahl?
I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and please stay safe and enjoy the holidays.
Thank you. A little bit of business here. We want me to get into January 4th. January 4th will be a work session. January 11th will be a meeting. And then January 25th will be a work session and meeting that night. Also, we'd like to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Your turn.
Merry Christmas.